I want to call you, call to order the council meeting of February 12th, 2018. Before we get to the regular roll call, et cetera, I think it's appropriate that we pause for a moment of silence for the two officers killed in Westville, as well as pray for the continued safety of our officers and other officers throughout the United States. Thank you very much. Please call the roll.
Rich Carter?
Here.
Hank Conroy?
Here.
Ed Hattonback?
Here.
Lita Kaymine?
Here.
Tom Muthing?
Here.
Ray Warren?
Here.
Natalie Wolf?
Here.
Scott Armour?
Here.
Kevin Crane?
Here.
Keith Wallace?
Here.
Rick Peck?
Here.
Now if everyone could please rise and join me in the pledgeable legion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it is one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store.
Welcome, everyone. First item on the agenda this evening is our minutes from our last regularly scheduled meeting. These were circulated to council members in your package. Are there any changes, additions, or deletions? Seeing none, we consider the minutes through. We will now have the finance report from December 2017.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to talk about December 2017, but wrap that up as the entire year, so do a little bit of a year-end summary. So included in your packet with the UAN report is a summary of items from December, but December was a very positive month for the village. We took in revenues of $458,000. That revenue brought us to a total of $4.8 million for the year, and was pointed out during our finance committee meeting, the village collected 99.9% of the estimated revenue during 2017. Our revenue for 2017, though, was about $680,000 less than 2016's revenues, which was when our earnings tax had its most robust year. The earnings tax for 2017 totaled $2.7 million. That was about $262,000 less than was estimated. However, December's earnings tax in the amount of $387,000 was the largest amount collected in any month, in the month of December of any year that we've ever had. So December was a tremendous month for the village. And it appears that residents paid estimated taxes, not prepaid taxes, but estimated merely to get up to date on their estimated taxes due to changes in the federal tax code. I have included an extra sheet in your council packet that showed the collections for earnings tax for this past decade. So it reflects from 2007 through 2017. You can see how the earnings tax has trended over the years. I do want to mention that that large amount that was collected in December 2017 will likely have some kind of an effect on our April 2018 collections, even though there was no prepayment of earnings taxes. There is also a due date change that will be occurring in 2018 that will affect our collections. Our estimate for earnings tax collections in 2018 is $2,750,000. The conclusion of that, as we say at most of our finance committee meetings, is to not look at it from a snapshot standpoint, but merely look at it on a continuum and identify trends, which is what our finance committee does every quarter. They look at all of the earnings tax on a quarterly basis, identify those trends, and see how it is tracking. There were other sources of revenue that were significant in the general fund, which is what I'm talking about this evening. The property tax, $953,000 was collected in property tax, and you'll see also in your packet another chart that shows, a table that shows property tax collections from 2007 through 2017. And you'll notice that the property tax collections peaked in 2007 at $1.1 million, and then in 2017 it was $953,000. The other sources of revenue that are worth mentioning, this past year, the homestead exemption was about $147,000. Local government fund, which are the monies we receive from the state of Ohio, just a little less than $59,000. The Jed's endeavor was a little less than $120,000. The cell tower rent at the North site, a little over $90,000. Court fines, $85,000, and interest, $55,000. The interest has certainly come up over the last few years. All of this contributed to about $4.8 million that was collected in 2017. On the expense side of the ledger, the December expenses are always higher. That's just one of those months where we collect a lot of expenditures and write a lot of checks. It totaled a little over $600,000 in December 2017. Our total for the year, brought our total to the year of $4.6 million. Council had budgeted $4.9 million for the year. The village spent $4.6, so that left about $385,000 that was not, that was budgeted but was not spent. And just keep in mind, this $4.6 million expenditure did include transfers in the amount of about $390,000 to our capital fund, as well as to our street fund, and also the employee severance fund. The expense in 2017 of $4.6 million was about $350,000 more than what was spent in 2016. Obviously, our largest expense is the police department, and without the $1.6 million in police money through the levy, the village would have spent more out of our general fund, more in our general fund than it takes in. So certainly, the police levy is critical to fund our police operation. The total expenditure in the police department in 2017 was $3 million, with the general fund paying $1.3 million of that, and the balance of it being coming out of the police levy. With the expenditures being controlled, the revenue's running slightly under last year's. The village ended 2017 with an unencumbered general fund balance of $5.8 million. And my last table in there shows the general fund balance from 2017 up through 2017. So we ended the year at $5.8 million. So this information is available not only in the council packet, it's also available on our website through the Open Gov link and the open checkbook, where our finances are visible to anyone. And then the last item I want to mention is that the village is required to produce a report. It's called an annual report that goes to, annual financial statement that goes to the state of Ohio, and it's a ledger sheet, and that has been submitted to the state. It is also available at our admin window, and it's also available online if residents want to view it online. And it's not an easy to read document, but it is available, and it's required to be submitted. And that concludes my financial report.
Are there any questions for the If not, we will now move on to the swearing-in of our new auxiliary officer.
Mayor, I have the sheet here. Today, we're going to swear on our newest auxiliary officer. It's actually our first auxiliary officer. Auxiliary, he'll be auxiliary part-time. We're actually serving a role as a police officer, but he'll actually do off-duty details and other functions that we have within Village Hall. This is Dane Donovan. Dane is coming to us from the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office, where he's been with them for the past 10 years. We're excited to have him. With Dane today is his wife Julie, his sons Aiden, Nolan, Declan, so I knew I'd mess it up, and his mother Julie, and unable to attend tonight because of prior commitment, his father Dale. Welcome.
May I raise your hand?
Aye.
Aye.
Dane Donovan.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm
that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the stateable office.
The Constitution and laws of the stateable office.
And the laws and ordinances of the village of Amberly Village.
The laws and ordinances of Amberly Village.
And I will discharge the duties of police officers.
I will discharge the duties of the police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. All right. You're in. Here.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Thank you.
We're at eight.
Sure.
You want me to date it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
For those in attendance here and who watch this on video, with the Auxiliary Police Officers is a program that was approved by council last year, and the auxiliary officers are critical for us to kind of give our regular officers, you know, less time on some duties like special assignments when they're up at the Jewish community center and things like that. They will not be doing road duty or any of the regular duties of our police officers, but it's a great way to supplement our regular officers and give them a little less pressure as far as their time to serve those additional duties. So this is something in our chair of our police environment committee can give additional details.
I also just wanted to add that it was initiated by the chief in recognition that people in Amberly like seeing our own officers at events, because he can always recruit other officers for details and special events, but that it's just kind of part of our community to have our own staff.
Are they full-time officers?
No, they're part-time.
Okay, we will now move on to committee reports. And the first committee report will be the finance committee.
In council member Hattonback's absence, I'm giving the finance report tonight. We have in our packets ordinance 2018-3, which would amend the Amberly Village income tax code to conform with some new requirements from the state of Ohio that were in House Bill 49. You may recall that back in October, village council approved for the village to join a coalition of municipalities who were formed to initiate litigation challenging these amendments for municipal income tax centralized collection and other things that we believe are approaching on home rule. This litigation is in progress, and certain other requirements have been stayed until February 24th. But given that our next meeting is not until March, if the stay is not continued, or depending on what happens, we need to approve this ordinance as a, just in case. Should the stay be continued or the requirements be set aside, it is written such that that is no problem. It's just set aside. The language of the ordinance also does not concede the legality of those requirements. So the first thing I want to do is waive the three readings on this ordinance so that it can take immediate effect.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings on ordinance 2018-3, which would amend the village's income tax code. Is there any, are there any questions or discussion? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings on ordinance 2018-3. Please call the roll.
Rich Carter?
Yes.
Hank Conroy?
Yes.
Lita Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolf?
Yes.
Okay, and now I'd like to move that we adopt ordinance 2018-3 to amend the village income tax code to adopt section 718.8 through 718.95 of the Ohio Revised Code.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2018-3 amending the village's income tax code. Are there any questions or discussion? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2018-3. Please call the roll.
Rich Carter?
Yes.
Hank Conroy?
Yes.
Lita Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolf?
Yes.
Okay, and finally, I'd like to move that we adopt this ordinance as an emergency, given the time constraints that I already outlined.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2018-3 as an emergency measure, which would allow it to go into immediate effect. Is there any questions or discussion on that? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2018-3 as an emergency measure. Please call the roll.
Rich Carter?
Yes.
Hank Conroy?
Yes.
Lita Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolf?
Yes.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the health, education, and welfare committee.
Thank you, Mayor. I am going to reverse the order of what you have on your agenda and talk about the resolution first. That is Resolution 2018-4 in support of Ohio House Bill 160, also known as the Ohio Fairness Act. HB 160 changes Ohio's anti-discrimination laws to include sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression as protected classes, expanding legal protections in housing, employment, and access to public services. The bill also provides a restatement of First Amendment principles and current case law. While LGBT Ohioans have made great strides towards equality, they still do not enjoy the same legal protections against discrimination afforded to other Ohioans. Gay and transgender people are our friends, neighbors, family, and coworkers. When it comes to being able to earn a living, having a place to live, or being served by a business or government office, they should be treated like anyone else and not be discriminated against. HB 160 strengthens Ohio's existing anti-discrimination laws by adding sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression to protect LGBT people and those who may be perceived as LGBT. This measure protects LGBT people statewide, bringing them a step closer to full access to their legal rights. House Bill 160 has the support of the Ohio Chamber of Commerce, which states that it is good for business. It also has the support of over 300 businesses in Ohio. Currently, Ohio has a patchwork of local laws that protect all citizens, including LGBTQ citizens. However, it is still technically legal in the majority of municipalities to discriminate against citizens because of who they are and who they love. In fact, Amberly is one of the municipalities where discrimination is still legal. From House Bill 160, and this is what is added, lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender individuals are too often the victims of discrimination. They may be fired from jobs, denied access to housing and educational institutions, refused credit, and excluded from public accommodations because of their sexual orientation or gender identity or expression. And two, it is essential that the state of Ohio protect the civil rights of all its residents. The Ohio Fairness Act is enacted to protect civil rights by prohibiting discrimination against lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender individuals. This act upholds existing religious exemptions currently in Ohio law. And I would like to move that this council approve and pass Resolution Number 2018-4.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2018-4, which would say our support for House Bill 160, which is the Ohio Fairness Act. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2018-4 supporting the Ohio House Bill 60. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Be noted that the resolution passed unanimously.
And Mayor, I'd like to request that the resolution be sent to all of our representatives in Columbus and the State House, in addition to all media outlets showing Amberly's partnership.
And could the clerk do that similar to the way we've sent previous resolutions like this to all members of the State House?
Next, I have the first reading of ordinance 2018-4. This is an ordinance to combat discrimination and for the guarantee of equality and inclusion. This ordinance creates a nonpartisan Human Rights Commission in Amberly Village. The purpose of the commission is not to penalize, but to encourage and endeavor to bring about mutual understanding and respect among all persons, and to safeguard the right and opportunity of all persons to be free from all forms of discrimination. The Human Rights Commission is to be comprised of five residents of Amberly Village, one appointed by the village manager, one appointed by the mayor, and three members appointed by council. Their three-year terms are to be staggered. The ordinance also adds sex, sexual orientation, gender identification, or expression to Amberly's housing code. And that is...
Are there any questions on the first reading? I mean, I have one question that we might want to consider. As far as the members of the commission, right now it provides for the appointment by village manager, mayor, and council as the state. Does not provide for any removal of members of the commission if it is appropriate. I don't know if it is appropriate that we have that. We don't have, I mean, for council members, we obviously have provisions in the code that provide for removal by a vote of council. We don't have that for the Environmental Stewardship Committee. I just don't know if it's appropriate in this case.
It does have term limits, though.
It does have term limits.
And if you're not attending, then you're off, too.
And it's just one, you know, it may not be necessary, but if, you know, if the, what I was thinking of is if the human rights, if three members of the Human Rights Commission felt someone was being disruptive in their work and made a recommendation to the council for the removal, do we want to put them off?
Well, my only thought is that would be inconsistent with, as we stated, the other, you know, I think the closest committee we have of the like is the Environmental Stewardship Committee. I mean, there are certainly things to think about, and I would like to have the committee continue to meet and discuss this ordinance, because I do sort of feel that we just passed a resolution, we've passed two resolutions this year strongly supporting equality among for everybody, including LGBTQ citizens, and yet we are now talking about an ordinance in our own municipality that does not do that. So I feel there is a lot of cognitive dissonance between what we say and what we do. It is the first reading, and certainly, you know, Kevin, I'm correct that we still have time to consider changes and even consider whether this is the ordinance that's what we want.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, if you substantively change an ordinance, I might recommend you go back to reading one. So there'll be readings, but still leave readings if you've had enough discussion already. Yeah, they can be changed. You can add with respect.
And I know I would like to continue to hear from residents.
I just want to observe that I, I mean, I attended a lot of the meetings. I'm not a member of that committee, and I don't personally experience a cognitive dissonance between what we're lobbying for from the state versus what we're doing here. In those meetings, there was a lot of diverse opinion expressed, and there was a bit of divisiveness that was emerging. And I want to express my gratitude to the committee for keeping at the issue and coming up with a different approach that is not the final word on the matter, but is a really great step. In my time on village council, about a decade now, I've witnessed a lot of conflicts in the community that ultimately brought people together, and people that were adversaries on an issue got to know each other and became friends. And I'm hoping that the commission will be able to bring about positive connections among people. And I think one of the reasons personally I'm so strongly in favor of the state's legislation is that it provides protection for the village that having our own ordinance does not. There was input that we would be exposing ourselves to liability that would be perhaps ill-advised. So that, I, that's where I'm at with it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Just one comment, specific to one part of the ordinance. Not necessarily we deal with it before we actually go through three readings, but just really to get some advice. So on section 102.08 on public contracts, so it currently states, "The village shall give consideration to all contractors who have stated inclusive policy against discrimination that is substantially similar to the village's policy as set forth in this chapter." My request that we consider is that when bids or proposals are requested to potential vendors, that information on the village's discrimination ordinance policy be sent together with that. This way, vendors are informed of what our policy, you know, what our discrimination policy is, and it becomes kind of an educational moment for vendors to consider. So I'm not saying we necessarily change the wording of the ordinance, but I think we need to anticipate how we want to implement this at that time.
I think we actually talked about that at the last meeting, about whether that would be just another form. One other thing I want to add is if you look up the history of HB 160, you'll see that most Ohioans think that there are already protections in place for everybody. They would be surprised to know that it was actually legal, technically legal, to discriminate against someone because they're gay. And that's just not true. It's not, Ohio doesn't provide those protections. And similar bills to HB 60 have been proposed for the last 10 years, and only now has this bill finally received even one hearing. So there's, there's not a lot of hope. I mean, there is hope, but that this will pass, but past history is not on the side of this bill passing. And also, people think that there are protections as well in the local municipalities. So it's something to think about, that those protections aren't there in the majority of Ohio municipalities. Can I start work on this, on this issue?
Mayor, I have something I would like to add. My only concerns, as I brought up when Natalie had her last meeting, is the communication between the board and the police department. We just, we can't be in a situation where we're, we think it's harassment, and then, because a lot of times when we take a report, somebody may say, hey, somebody stole something from me. By the time we get to their house, it went from a theft to a burglary. And that's what I don't want with the commission. If it's something that somebody says, hey, I'm being harassed by a neighbor, you know, I'm 100% on board and doing what we have to do to stop it, it's unacceptable. But if at some point during that hearing, the board, if we're not involved, and the board hears that, well, what was the harassment? Well, the harassment was, you know, they, I think they slit my car tires, or they did something else. You know, if... proposed for the last 10 years, and only now has this bill finally received even one hearing. So there's, there's not a lot of hope, I mean, there is hope, but, that this will pass, but past history is not on the side of this bill passing. And also, people think that there are protections as well in the local municipalities. So it's something to think about, that those protections aren't there in the majority of Ohio municipalities. Can I have some more work on this, on this issue?
Mayor, I have something I would like to add. My only concerns, as I brought up when Natalie had her last meeting, is the communication between the board and the police department. We just, we can't be in a situation where we're, we think it's harassment and then, because a lot of times when we take a report, somebody may say, hey, my, somebody stole something from me. By the time we get to their house, it went from a theft to a burglary. And that's what I don't want with the commission. If it's something that somebody says, hey, I'm being harassed by a neighbor, you know, I'm 100% on board and doing what we have to do to stop it, it's unacceptable. But if, at some point during that hearing, the board, if we're not involved and the board hears it, well, what was the harassment? Well, the harassment was, you know, they, I think they slit my car tires, or they did something else. You know, if, if people have this in their mind that they're only going to go to the board and the board is not communicating with us, I just don't want a lax, a lack, you know, lacking everything we do by putting this board together. We need to make sure that, you know, the board is communicating with us, and we still have to get together and figure out what our involvement is, too. Because I just don't want something to happen and then us later trying to do something and we can't do anything about it, and then it looks like, well, we're not prosecuting because the person is gay, or the person is transgender. Well, we're not prosecuting because we blew the whole investigation by going to the hearing and everything contaminated. That's what I don't want. We want to make sure we do it right. So if you can make sure that, you know, at some point when we sit down and really narrow this down, that the police are involved, I think it's important. I think you and I discussed it, too, a little bit.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, obviously, it'll be on our agenda for the next meeting, as far as second reading. I assume that concludes.
Yeah, I report again.
We will now move on to the police and fire.
Okay, we have tonight the second reading of Ordinance 2018-1, authorizing a contract with Cost Recovery Corp. for the collection and reimbursement of certain public safety expenses. The village has contracted with this corporation for the last 10 years to recoup some of the costs that are incurred because of negligent drivers. The updated contract has a new cost schedule of the public safety services and equipment that the village seeks reimbursement for, and this is pursued with at-fault drivers who are not residents of the village. It's, and they work with insurance companies, and it's not something that happens all the time, but it does help us cover some costs that are incurred. So, that's the second reading. Oh, and Kevin has some additional changes, sorry.
Yes, I had two comments, and one was the contract we've given you has two alternates for a certain paragraph. It's in Section 2C, and it kind of depended on which cost schedule we were going to use, whether it was one originating from our police department, or whether it was one generating from the cost recovery company, and we're picking alternate two. So when you see the contract, we're going to cross out the alternate one language. And that's from conversations with Chief Wallace and how they prefer to do things, and they've looked at their cost schedules or their costs and deemed that the cost schedule provided by the contractor were reasonable. So just when you look at the contract, we're picking alternate two. And also, thanks to Councilmember Conway, who has followed this up on the committee level. You know, we had the committee report last month emphasizing that these reimbursements were going to be sought only against non-residents, and Councilmember Conway has made sure that this bill is, this bill, this ordinance is good for residents by ensuring that, because if you guys don't remember, this is basically a system where if someone causes an accident in the village and there's a, an emergency response by police or fire, that the village can recover some of their costs for having to respond to the accident. So it costs money to send personnel out there, it costs money to send equipment out there, and so this is a way to recover some costs from people that are found to be negligent. They have to be negligent. It can't just be a simple accident where no one's at fault. This is a situation where someone is at fault, and also residents already pay taxes to support the police department. So if the decision was made to seek reimbursement for these costs only against non-residents, and when that was brought up at the last meeting, it was my determination that that was not adequately covered in the contract or the ordinance, so I've gone back and I've amended the ordinance to include a Section 2, just to clarify what Councilmember Conway has emphasized, that it should be non-residents only.
Is that in our, what we got in our packet, or has that not made its way through the?
Um...
It is in there?
It should be in the packet for this month. There's a new Section 2, the language is underlined in the ordinance itself. It just, it just says, "The village police chief shall ensure that reimbursements under the contract approved herein shall only be sought and enforced against non-residents of the village because residents already support the village's public safety services through the payment of tax." It's, it's been the policy of the village for years, just it hasn't been set either in the contract or the ordinance. I just wanted to make that clear.
That is my report.
Okay, we'll now move on to the managers' report.
There's one item of business to take care of under the managers' report, and that is Ordinance 2000, excuse me, Ordinance 2018-5, adopting and enacting supplement to the Code of Ordinances. This is our annual village code update. It's the means that we have of taking all of the legislation that council has, has approved over the last, this past year, and rolling that into our codified ordinance. Even though it's already been adopted, you have to take the next step in order to codify it. So it's necessary for a motion to be made to adopt Ordinance 2018-5.
Now, is this, is this something that we need three readings on?
No, it is not.
I move that we adopt Ordinance 2018-5 to adopt and enact a supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the village.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we adopt Ordinance 2018-5, which would enact as a supplement to our code for the ordinances to include the changes through the state, et cetera. Is there any questions or discussion?
I have a question. So we're not changing any ordinances of the village, we're just codifying what we've already passed. So I guess the question is, why do we need an ordinance for this? Because we've already created the ordinance. I mean, we haven't changed it.
Or that, yeah. The simple answer is that's the way it's always been done for decades and decades at every city in Ohio. I can't tell you exactly why. This is what's officially printed in the books of the village, so, you know, when a coroner someone sees what is the codified ordinance of the village of Ohio, it'll be set forth in that book. If we don't do that, technically, the ordinance are kind of, we've passed them, but they're kind of floating out, not in a book. You know, we said, "What are the laws of Ohio?", but they're all here in these books. If you don't put them in the book, no one's ever going to find them.
And that requires an ordinance. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, it leaves a paper trail, if nothing else, that it was done.
Any other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved in second that we adopt Ordinance 2018-5. Please call the roll.
Chris Corden? Kate Conway?
Yes.
Delita Kaymine? Yes. Tom Beating? Yes. Ray Warren? Yes. Matt Lewis? Yes.
On the managers' report, I'd like to mention three items. The first item is in regards to community development block grant. You may recall that this past year, we held two public hearings. They were not held during council meetings, but they were held for the purpose of seeking input from residents about the application that we should submit for funding through the CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant. This is a source of funding that is administered by Hamilton County, and we did hold the hearings. We did make application for three various projects, and we were informed this past month that we are the recipients of $25,000 for remediation of asbestos in the roof of the clubhouse at Amberly Green. So this is not the current contract that is, that you awarded last month on abatement of asbestos. This will be another part of it that will occur most likely in latter 2018. We do have $25,000 that will go towards that. It is conditioned on Congress passing their budget, which controls the CDBG, so it is dependent on that. But we do anticipate getting those funds later this year. So good news on that front. The second item is the Amberly Village Alarm, referred to as Ava. This is a project that has been in the works for the last few years. I just want to announce that the village is nearing the kickoff of Ava, which is our alarm monitoring service. It'll be going live on March the 5th. Residents will be receiving a letter from the police department here in this next week in regards to introducing Ava and also providing them with frequently asked questions that residents might have about this. Residents will have the option of choosing their alarm installer. Residents can do that, and this information packet will provide all that information. We'll also be, this is a system that we're quite proud of because the alarm comes directly into our police department as opposed to going to an alarm company. The cost is not going to change. We currently charge $15 a month. That will stay the same at this time. There is an additional $7 fee if resident wants to connect with cellular instead of the landline. That would be, make it $22 a month. So residents should expect to receive the notice within the next few weeks in regards to the Amberly Village alarms first. And then the last I wanted to mention is regards to another initiative by our police and fire department, and that is making sure that house numbers are visible. This is something that every community struggles with, that our police and fire department have taken the initiative to pay particular attention to house numbers, to make sure they're visible on the mailbox or visible on a house, and then the department has created a door hanger that they can provide to residents if they notice that those house numbers are not visible. That is a very gentle way of encouraging the residents to replace damaged or missing numbers, or to make those letters more, those numbers more readable, so that when we, the first responders, are called to your house, we're able to find that house quicker, and that certainly is a move to ensure that our residents are kept and responded to in a very safe manner. That concludes.
Any other questions for me?
A question on the, on the street numbers, on the house numbers, rather. I know many years ago, the, I don't know if it was the Boy Scouts had a program with...
It was an Eagle Scout project. I was thinking of that, too.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. So Eagle Scout project, that, some minimal cost, basically planted your house number in your front lawn. Do you know if...
Well, I was going to ask, are there vendors that you recommend for...
At this time, no. We, we just are pushing for people to get it done and get something out there to make it easier. You know, our officers pretty much know where we're going, whether it's by address, by name, but when we're bringing other jurisdictions in for our life squad, and now that, you know, Gulf Manor merges with Little Miami, we have a whole new group of people that are going to be servicing our area, and what we don't want to see is a delay in response to anyone's health.
Any other questions? Just one question on the grant for the asbestos in the roof. Is there a timeframe that it has to be spent by in order to call?
There will be a timeframe, but now that the money is on hold through the, through Congress approving their budget, that timeframe has not been established. But once that money is released from Congress, yes, that will trickle down to us as to when it has to be completed.
All right, and now move on to the chief's report.
Thank you. I'll just follow up a little bit on the Ava alarm system. The credit where it's due, Nicole came up with the name, Amberly Village Alarm. Smile, you, use your idea. It was, it's actually a good acronym for us. The, so the next steps for that is we're actually going to be sending our letter out, and then there'll actually be another information packet when they start calling installers that they'll get more detailed information. We will not send that out in a mailer because their alarm permit fee, alarm permits, zone locations and things like that, it would be a very large mailer, and cost would, would not be prohibited to send it out not knowing who's going to get the system. So once everyone receives the alarm letter, if they decide to go that direction, you know, they, they'll get, they'll go the next steps and they'll receive that packet. The, and that's also with that, that's where also the census comes in to help. Again, today, you know, we constantly are making alarm drops at people's houses, and the purpose of the census is, these alarms are going off, and they happen, you know, during the day, at night and everything, and these people, every, people leave town, they leave us no emergency contacts, they leave us, they don't tell us a cell phone numbers or anything else, and we're leaving these alarms go off for, you know, a long time. And all that we can do is disconnect the power, which is not feasible in a house. So that's the, that's why we need this pertinent information to be able to make these, to follow up with stuff. If we don't get the pertinent information, the next steps are, we have to make a decision at that point, are we going to follow the ordinance and start charging people, billing people for officers going out, making the runs and not having any contact information? That's what we don't want to do. We have that on ordinance. If we start getting the drops, we don't want to use that. We'd rather get the information and get the, you know, be able to stop it, but we're not annoying all the neighbors. The next thing I have is dispatchers.
Can I make a comment? I'm glad that you brought up the census, because we received ours last week, I sent it in today, but I have to tell you that we are really living in a time where people might be reticent to give out all of the information that is asked, and I understand why, why the police department, the fire department need that information from us, but that, that doesn't erase, you know, the times that we live in. So I would like to suggest that either in our next newsletter, or on the call slate safe, or on social media, that we do a little more explanation of why it is needed, you know, whether it's to know who is in the house in the event of a fire, or just all of these things that it's to make a safe and not to be used to be turning our residents into ICE.
These are not public records, are they? These forms?
Everything's public record that comes in.
Really?
Yeah. Just like the commission that you formed is public record when it comes in, too. It all is.
But police reports aren't, though?
Police, just depends on what it is. If it's an act of criminal investigation, no, but everything else is subject to it. We, we can scratch out certain things, Kevin, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, let's say you sent it in and we, you give us your alarm codes, garage codes and things like that, because we can, all that kind of stuff we can take out of it because it's a threat to their house or breaking in or something like gaining entry in their property, correct? Because we can't, I mean, it's not a public rec, just like in law enforcement, we don't have to give our address out. It's not a public record because of the protection of the thing. I would think that if you have a keypad on your garage, that's not a public record.
But the census didn't ask for that kind of information, actually. It didn't ask for alarm. It just wanted to know names.
People give that, though, is why I'm pointing that out. Some people do give that, still.
Yeah, if you want, I can look and see what we can exclude from the Public Records Act. I mean, most of it's public record, but maybe we can exclude alarm codes, maybe we can exclude names of minor children and that kind of thing. Things are more public than you might think. This is my caveat. I mean, I don't know what I'm going to come back with as far as what we can exclude, but...
Well, I can assure you, I'm not giving it out.
Until I tell you different.
I can assure you, I won't be giving it out, so we'll just have to take it in a different direction.
Right, I mean, exclude the alarm codes from any disclosures until I get back to you, but I'll look at it.
Well, if, if that's the case, this, this is probably not a good meeting to have on, on TV, because we just told everyone that they can get people's codes. So I would think that we're going to eliminate giving that stuff out some way or another.
No, that's what I mean. I do not disclose alarm codes until I get back to you, but I'll look at it this week.
Dispatchers, back in November, we discussed adding a fourth part, a full-time dispatcher. We actually went through the process internally. We had eight part-timers. We went through the process with our, you know, our normal polygraph and everything else, and we actually came down and we ended up picking Ben Spears for the position. He's going to be leaving the Hamilton County Communications Center after, I believe, 22 years to come here. He brings, the amount of knowledge and skillset he brings here is just remarkable. He posted something on social media, and to see the number of responses he got for him leaving the county, how many people are disappointed because of the job he does. It's a good thing for us, and we're glad to have him on board, and he'll be starting, I believe, the first week of March. The last thing is that we talked about the auxiliary part-time officers. In December, I found a, I found a grant, as usual. I found a grant, I put in for it, and I was notified Friday. We received a $12,000 grant. We, this is the first time we received the 100% of what we asked for, and the reason I asked for that was, I was hoping we can use auxiliaries in a little bit different way if we're having trouble with car break-ins in an area or traffic complaints where we can actually put an auxiliary in a, in a car and park him in an area where the road units are still out there doing their normal routine and patrols. If there's, you know, threats at the school or the JCC or anywhere else, or we just wanted an extra presence there, we actually have, you know, $12,000 that we can spend toward that now. So that gives us about $100 hours a month to be able to do that. So we're starting out the year great on grants with what Scott reported here, and then last month, we reported the $26,000 grant. Been a good year so far.
Where's, where's that grant issued from?
Oh, I forget that one.
Was that a county grant, state grant?
It's a state grant. Yeah, I, I don't recall off the top of my head. I can look it up real quick, but, before the mayor's report's done, I'll tell you.
That's great.
Any questions for the chief? Now, we'll move on to the mayor's report, and I really just have a couple items with respect to the Environmental Stewardship Committee. With respect to the Environmental Stewardship Committee, please keep an eye out for the one-stop drop, which will be April 8th. We will definitely have the safe paper shredding and the electronics recycling, the item that we've had in the past as far as fabric and things like that, and we are going to have Goodwill Industries at the site, at the recycling event this year, and they will give us a list of items that they're going to give. It's going to be things like clothing and things like that, that they, they will collect. And the, we will also have the, I can't remember the name of the outfit.
Oh, scrap it up.
Scrap it up will also be at the event again this year, and they collect used art supplies and things like that. They actually have a store up at Pleasant Ridge. So we will have the four stations again, so keep an eye out for the details on that, and we will also be looking for volunteers to help, help with that event, and, you know, for volunteers to help. It is a fun event for people to help that, and a good way to meet some of your neighbors and things like that, so as I say, keep an eye out for that. The next meeting of the Environmental Stewardship Committee will be February 26th, 7 o'clock, in the community room. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was, you know, the chief mentioned as far as the video of this meeting, the videos are getting looked at a lot more by residents, and that's a great thing. Next month, I will actually give some statistics on how much it is being viewed. I really do encourage residents to, to watch the meeting at their, their leisure, and look at what's going on in the village. And if you have questions, please, you know, you can, you can send the questions in via eGov or any other thing, and we will be glad to answer your questions. This is meant to be as open as possible, and we encourage residents to attend, encourage residents to get on the notification list for committee meetings, council meetings, and so forth, because the best way to get involved in the community is to know what's going on, if it's an opportunity to, to be involved, you know, that's one of the benefits of being a, a community the size of Amberly Village, is that people can very much be involved in what's going on. With that, that concludes my mayor's report. Are there any questions? We now move on to new business. Does anyone have anything? If not, we can consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much for attending.